Good evening, everybody. If you would all stand to join me in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to welcome all to our March 15 Board of Aldermen's meeting, congratulate all the newly elected officials that we have with us this evening. The first order of business, if we can get the six newly elected alderfolks to stand, Mayor Laird is going to swear you folks in and get us underway, and then we will start the board president. So if we get you six to stand, Mayor Laird, you can go ahead and raise the oath, which were our aldermen.
Okay, good evening. It's my honor and privilege to swear you in tonight. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
Hi.
Hi, William Gillum.
I'm Franco, do solemnly swear.
I, Thomas DePoy, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of alderman.
The office of alderman.
The office of alderman.
Of the city of Rutland.
Of the city of Rutland.
The city of Rutland.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
According to law.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations, everyone. Welcome aboard.
All righty then, thank you so very much, Mayor Laird. I know this is unusual. Thirteen years I've been doing this. This is the first swearing in by Zoom or by computer. And I have to be honest with you, I don't like it very much. I'd rather see you folks live it in person. We're getting there very shortly. So if you cooperate, and I know this could be a little. You guys hear me now?
That's better.
Well, we left out what happened. We have been on muted, but I just wanted to say, you know, welcome to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for everyone that is new. This is very hard to do in this environment and stuff. So the first, the first thing that we need to take care of is electing a new board president. So what I'd like to do now is I'd like to open the nominations for board president. Alderman Neary.
Thank you, Clerk Heck. I would like to nominate Alderman Whitcomb for the board president.
Okay, Alderman Matt Whitcomb has been nominated.
I will second that.
Alderman DePoy has seconded the nomination of Alderman Whitcomb. Are there any other nominations forthcoming? I don't see any other nominations. All of those folks in favor of Alderman Whitcomb being the board president, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Congratulations, Alderman Whitcomb. You are now the new board president of the city of Alderman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clerk Heck. Thank you, everyone. Just give me a moment while I get situated here. All right. Let me begin, please, by congratulating Alderman DePoy and Alderman Gillum on their successful election. Great to have you guys back on the board. And let me please welcome Alderman Dunz, Neary, Franco, and Savage. We're looking forward to having you aboard. And we are all looking very forward to the work to live ahead of you and done together. So thank you, everyone. Really, really good to see all of you. So we're gonna open it up right now. First minutes of the meeting, March 2020. This should have all been. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried.
Point of order. Point of order. Caller two, they're, they're going at it pretty good. Could they please mute their mic?
Let me test something really quick. I believe Henry and I are caller two. It may be caller nine.
All right, we'll keep shimming up on here as two, I'm sorry, whatever it is.
One moment.
Caller nine.
Sorry, I don't know who you are, but I had to place you on mute.
Thank you, sir.
Is that better?
Beautiful. Thank you. Now we can hear. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So we are on to outside the rail. Do we have members of the public who wish to address the board? I'm not, it's not on the agenda. All right. Alderman Torey, or former Alderman Torey, I'm sorry.
It's former, thank you. So I just wanted to take a minute today. I, I expected to be here in a different role, so I didn't talk at the last meeting. But I did want to congratulate the mayor for his win and the new aldermen for their wins as well. Last time I was here in public comment, it was the fall of 2014, and I was asking for $75,000 from the Zomias Fund for the kids museum. You may have heard that that's done pretty well since then. And so I return now to say thank you, both to this board, the colleagues that I've, I've been with over the past six years, and to the community. I enjoyed my service tremendously. I felt like I, I respected the board and I felt like I was a student of the board, and I really enjoyed learning from everyone, both the aldermen, as well as the department heads and the staff through City Hall. For the new folks, I've had a conversation with a few of you, and I'm really excited about the energy and your ideas. And I look forward to seeing what you do in this role. If I could give you two pieces of advice. First, please build relationships with each other, particularly with those you disagree. Challenging issues will come up, and it's important to have that base for when you're working with, with people in the future, that you, you know them personally. This COVID environment certainly makes that more of a challenge, but I know you all can do it. The other piece is to ask questions and learn. Reach out to the department heads and staff. I, I continue to learn throughout my time and then throughout my, while I was on, in the last campaign. If you do the work, no matter what your perspective, you will earn the respect of your fellow board members. And if I could leave two things that I didn't, don't want to lose, that I had learned during the campaign, and I want to make sure I kind of move on. First, please invest wisely. We have a lot of money in economic development funds that can be used. We have $220,000 in the downtown revolving loan fund. Hasn't been used in quite some time. $95,000 in the Maples revolving loan fund. If their policies aren't working, you know, send them to committee and work on it so they do. We still have about $175,000 in the Zomias Fund, and the Zomias Fund that you have access to. And then about $200,000 in the Buy Up Fund. And that policy does come up this summer. And so if giving the five or $10,000 increments to new businesses isn't working, then maybe it's time to redo it. The other piece is the housing. We have over 240 families. I believe it's families, I checked that, on the homeless prevention master list. These are people who they are working to house. We have a crisis in our community right now. There will be opportunities with the COVID relief money and also some of the work that the state's doing. But we do have a homeless crisis in our city, and we need to be working on it. If you have interest in being a part of this, the continuum of care meets the third Thursday at noon, which is this coming Thursday. If anybody wants to go, I'd be happy to send you the link. But on the same token, you know, we need our high-end rentals. And I just met a new investor, moved to the city, bought a four-unit house on Grove Street, and realized how much it costs to fix it up. These are all problems that can be solved with good ideas and good energy. And so I really look forward to seeing what you can do. And then just when I got the note in the mail the other day about stimulus checks, I really encourage everyone, if, if, if you're doing well, if, if you're not being impacted by COVID, if you want to invest that stimulus in our downtown businesses, our restaurants, our retail shops, they could really use it. And perhaps that's something this board wants to push. Perhaps there's a marketing initiative there. But we really need to help our local businesses, our small businesses, keep going through this crisis. We're almost out, and there's a lot to be done. So if you're one of those lucky people who's gonna get a few thousand dollars, and you don't need it to pay your bills, please invest. So with that, thank you. I appreciated my time on this board, and I'm not really going anywhere. But I'll step back now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torey. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing no one. We're on to communications from the mayor. Merrill nominations. These are appointed officials. Page one of your packet, Mayor Laird.
So thank you very much. Good evening once again, everyone. I would like to send along my congratulations once again to all the new and returning board members, and also to Alderman Whitcomb for your reelection as board chair. I have the one item that has just been mentioned on the agenda tonight. I do present to you four returning department heads for your reappointment. I ask that you table the issue to vote on at your next meeting. And for those who are listening in, the four names that I am presenting tonight are: Henry Heck for city clerk, Matt Blumer for city attorney, Robert Pelletier for building inspector, and Kim Peters as your recreation superintendent. So if you could table those until your next meeting, that would be great. Please.
Move to table those nominations.
We have a motion table, and it has been seconded. But all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, this has been tabled to the April 5th Board of Aldermen meeting. Anything else, Mayor Laird?
Yeah, just one other quick thing for tonight. I would like to politely ask the board if there is going to be any correspondence regarding the Heartland project in the short term here. If you could direct that correspondence through my office at this time. I am in constant contact with, with the developers, and we are having regular meetings with them. And at this point in time, it would be very helpful, as we move this along, if you could direct any, any questions or any of that correspondence through my office. This would be in the short term, but I think that that would move things along at a better pace. And I would like to politely ask that. So other than that, that's all I have tonight. Look forward to working with all of you. And again, once again, congratulations. And we've got some work to do ahead, both tonight and, and in the upcoming weeks and months ahead. And I look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Laird. Any questions for the mayor before we move on? All right, hearing and seeing none. We are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Attorney Blumer, I'm hoping you have a deletion.
I do. I do have one deletion. So the third executive session regarding the negotiation of real estate purchase and the negotiation of related contracts. Probably no secret that that's related to the CSJ gymnasium and surrounding acreage that the city plans to purchase by the end of the month. We had hoped to have as much of the kind of ancillary documentation together tonight to have you approve those at your regular meeting. But there's still a few things that are in flux. So I guess fortunately or unfortunately, fortunately for tonight, you know, we, we won't address those tonight, but we'll have to have you come back at some point this month to, you know, take a look at those agreements and discuss authorizing the mayor to sign those as part of the purchase and the, and the closing. So that's, that's my deletion, and I have a small addition. If the sign ordinance is passed in the form that it came out of charter and ordinance committee, we still have that newspaper notice that needs to be approved by the board. It slipped my mind, so I apologize that I didn't put it in the packet so that the new aldermen who weren't here last meeting would have a little bit more background on it. But it's, it's a fairly short document, it's a one-page, basically an ad that'll go in to, to the Herald that summarizes the changes in that particular ordinance. And I can put it up on my screen when the time comes. So hopefully that'll, people will be able to see it there, and we can talk through it at that point. So I would suggest doing it after the charter and ordinance committee report is read and voted on.
Very quick. Under unfinished business, do have to remove from the table the newspaper ad.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just, I'm now seeing what, yeah, that would be, that would be fine too, whenever you, whenever you'd like to take it up.
Okay. If it pleases the board, we can move that up immediately following the sign ordinance. All right, so on your agenda, we will be removing, under reports and letters from department heads and officials, Attorney Blumer's third one, the executive session regarding negotiation of real estate purchase and negotiation of related contracts. And we will move up the removal from the table of the newspaper ad to follow the signed ordinance report out. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Chief Lovett?
Yes, I'm here tonight to first welcome all the board members, new and old. Great to see you onboard. Talking to you tonight about the failure of a frame on a fire truck. I'd like to have you table it and put it into public safety so we could discuss it. So moved.
Second.
If we could, for discussion on this, chief, what's the, you have a failure of a frame. Is this a truck that's put out of commission, or is it still usable?
On, yes, it is. Actually, yes, it is out of commission. It was discovered under, during an inspection. We've explored all the possibilities of getting it repaired. Doesn't seem feasible, cost-effective.
Are we okay with being a truck short?
It's kind of why we're bringing it to you tonight. It's something that we will, will need to address rather quickly.
If we could, to add this to the agenda, under reports and letters from department heads and officials, it'll be the next item up, but just in case you have any other additions.
Absolutely.
All right, so all those in favor of adding this to the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Perfect. We will take that up as the first item under reports and letters. Are there any other additions and deletions to the agenda? If not, Chief Lovett, I will turn it over to you, as we are under reports and letters from department heads and officials. So we have the failure of a frame on one of our fire trucks.
Yes, as, as part of one of our, our routine inspections, I was trying to get our vehicles inspected earlier in the season. And during that inspection, we found that the frame on engine three is delaminated. It's a failure that's pretty severe. Investigating it through a couple of the rebuild shops that are close at hand, none of them wanted to tackle it. One of the big issues is the fact that the truck's being so specialized, having a facility that could work on it locally. It seems pretty impossible. Nobody around in this area wants to take it up. So we've explored multiple different avenues of getting it repaired. Have not had anything promising. So I would prefer to, or actually ask that it be sent to public safety so we could discuss it, or whatever your desire.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded, to refer failure of the frame on the fire truck to Public Safety Committee. Any further discussions, vague questions?
So this is the mayor. This is the mayor. I just want to let everyone know that the chief and I have had discussions about this and have looked at as many options as we could. I didn't want this to be brought up until after the new board was seated. But we do have a, a couple of proposals to bring to the Public Safety Committee about how to go forward. And in relation to that, put together a, I've asked the chief to put together a plan for future years for capital-related expenses so that we have a clear vision about how these trucks are gonna be purchased going forward and where the money's gonna come from and the spacing in between those purchases. Because this is a, this is a, these are not small items, and we have a lot of other needs throughout the city that are not fire-related, that are gonna have to be looked at too. So in that, you know, with that in mind, that's, that's what we're bringing to the, to the committee.
Thank you, Mayor Laird. Alderman Garusa, then Alderman DePoy.
Yes, I support the motion to refer, but I do have a question for the chief. What causes delamination, chief?
According to the manufacturer and two of the rebuild shops that I talked to, most of it is caused by ice-melting chemicals that are put on the roadway. How they sit on the frame, and it's causing the early rust through on these frames.
Which, which leads me to a follow-up. I, I would have asked this if I had a different job, is that we, we have a short life expectancy with a lot of our vehicles. Do we wash them? It seems when I watch like the news throughout the state of Vermont, a lot of other state vehicles and local vehicles are cleaned, and, and it doesn't seem like we take care of our trucks that well. Is, is there a washing program for them?
Yes. One of, one of the problems that's always plagued fire service vehicles is we take them outside and bathe them in salt water and then bring them back in. And they sit in a warm environment where the salt chews at the frame. We've routinely washed the bottoms of the trucks. In fact, there's protocols associated with our new trucks as far as how we wash off the bottom of the truck, and we use a rust inhibitor. It also neutralizes road salt. One of the other things we're, we've looked into is getting the trucks undercoated additionally locally, just to try to prevent this kind of stuff. But unfortunately, this has been in the making for some time.
I'd say it's not working, but go ahead. I support the motion to refer it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have Alderman DePoy, then Alderman Davis.
Thanks, President Whitcomb. So, Bill, about six or eight years ago, I mentioned to then Commissioner Wenberg for the DPW fleet to get oil undercoated. And I know you just mentioned that, oil undercoating. You'd have to figure out how to do it so that you're not dripping that oil all over your garage when, if you went to go and do that. But prior to the meeting for Public Safety to talk about this truck and/or, you know, purchasing new trucks, if you could please have some kind of pricing or some kind of correspondence with Carreras or somebody else that does oil undercoating in the area, and just give us an idea of cost and if that's feasible for you. Because, you know, it, it does leave a mess for a week or two after you get it oil undercoated. And I know that those trucks have to be stored in your, in the garage there at the police, or at the fire station. I don't want to create that much extra work for you guys there, but if it does save a $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 truck from rotting out on the underside, then it might be a really good idea to look into it at the very least. Because I know it is helping the DPW trucks that have been oil undercoated over the last few years. So you might want to speak with Chief Rotundo, or former Commissioner Wenberg about the program that they have in place as far as the oil undercoating goes.
Yeah, I actually have a price already with Earl's Truck Repair. They have the facility that can lift the weight of our trucks. Most of the trucks in the last couple purchases have already been factory undercoated. But in the springtime, they're gonna be undercoating all of our trucks. Very reasonable cost. And if it saves us a couple years on each of these frames, it's well worth it.
Really, just one question. What is the age of the vehicle?
The truck that we, that we're talking about is 17 years old. Typically, in, in good weather situations, we should get about 25 years out of an engine. And guess what this is?
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Chief Lovett? The urgency, how soon do we need to get this in the committee and address?
Well, as, as soon as is possible. It would be more advantageous because the prices of the replacement vehicles would be going up in the middle of April. April 15th is the deadline, if we could at least discuss it at that point. Rest assured, right now, we're relying on some of our mutual aid departments to help us out. Town of Rutland in particular, they've come in on four or five fires since we discovered this issue.
Many assignments will be filed shortly. And we, I'm confident we can commit to having that meeting in the next month. Any other questions for Chief Lovett? If not, we have a motion that has been seconded to send this to Public Safety Committee. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. I'm gonna pause really quick. I'm getting a lot of feedback from caller 13. I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, but I did have to mute you. All right, so we are still under reports and letters from department heads and officials, and we are on to Treasurer Markowski. City of Rutland Accounting, Auditing and Financial Reporting Policy Review and Approval. And Treasurer Markowski, you are up.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I hated to bring this tonight, on the first night for many. But in working with the RRA, with Barbara Spalding on one of the grants, this was, this policy requirement was included in one of the grants that she was working on with that. And we needed to have this in place by March 31st. Now, the policy is really just a statement of the practice that we already have in place and what's in our charter requirements for accounting, auditing, financial reporting. So it's really just outlining what we already have in place. So with this policy, I'm looking for the board's review and approval. So now I just ask if anyone has any specific questions regarding this?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor of suspending the rule, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries. Alderman Davis?
And Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the accounting, auditing, and financial report policy and authorizing the chair to sign, and the treasurer to sign, and the clerk to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any questions, discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, thank you. I would add that I am also reviewing other financial policies that we have, so I will likely be bringing more at a later meeting.
Alderwoman Davis?
Sorry, if I may, this kind of goes back to Chief Lovett issue. If Mary, if you could, when Public Safety meets, if you could please make sure we know the amount that's in the fire equipment replacement fund and any recommendation you may have for purchase or payment.
Okay, I'll do that because we have that the lease payment on that new, the newest purchase, I think the first payment is coming up here in June maybe. So yeah, I can give you the update and what's, what we're going to be drawing out of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Treasurer Markowski? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. We will let you go. Up next on your agenda, there are the two executive sessions from Attorney Blumer. We will move those to the end of the meeting. Leading us to reports of standing committees, charter and ordinance, sign ordinance. This was forwarded on to you by Clerk Heck from former Alderwoman Mattis. And I believe Alderman Gillum, you are going to read this report.
Thank you. Charter and Orders Committee met on Monday, March 8th, 2021. Committee members present was Mattis, Chair Etori, Gillum, Caruso, Humphrey. Other Aldermen present were Whitcomb, Clifford, Davis, Talbot. Others present was Brendan Duffy from the RRA, Brian Fogg, Mike Dungus and Thomas Franco, Bob Pelletier and Gordon from the Rutland Herald. The meeting started at 5:30. The purpose of this meeting was to clarify the provision in the sign ordinance, which had been approved by the board on February 16th. On March 1st, Brian Fogg had brought to the board attention a problem with the grandfather clause. Mr. Fogg, who owns the Credit Union of Vermont on Main Street, which is a cross street from the park for those who don't know, spoke to the committee about the investment he has made on his property and how the sign meets his business needs. He wanted, he wants to be able to maintain the electronical message board, which is EMB, without triggering compliance for this sign, for his sign, which is larger than the new maximum size, which is in the new ordinance. The committee agreed that the lighting infrastructure should be allowed to be maintained for the life of the business. And the lack of clarity in this matter was merely an oversight on the committee's part. The motion was made by Alderman Caruso to add a section 12-1-C-Roman Numeral IV to state maintenance of or upgrade to a mechanical facility, including lighting infrastructure, that is not to increase the extent of the sign non-conformity shall be considered a significant change. And I, that was voted 5-0, so I move.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion offered from committee? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Gillum?
Thank you. Mr. Fogg, whether expressed concerns about the time, time minimums in the EMB message, that's the message board. The original draft had six, eight seconds, which was changed by the committee to 30 seconds. And the committee agreed that the original intent was reasonable and the eight seconds is typical practice in the industry. So Alderman Etori moved to change the minimum timing of the EMB message board to the section of 11-6-D from 30 seconds to eight seconds. The motion passed 5-0, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the proposed change coming out of committee? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 As opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Gillum?
Yes, Mr. Fogg also was concerned about the requirements of a mental dimming, but the committee was assuring that the computer programming dimming for the EMBs is a standard and is what means to be manual as opposed to default programming of this sign. The meeting was adjourned at 6:01. And it was, the report was submitted by the Chair Rebecca Mattis and did a wonderful job. Thank you, Rebecca, if you're online here. That's the end of the report, Mr. Chairman. I also like to make a motion to remove from the table the Rutland Herald warning for this ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to remove from the table the newspaper ad sign ordinance amendment warning. It has been seconded. Would all those in favor of removal, removing from the table, please indicate by saying aye.
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 As opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer, I believe we'll turn it over to you. You have something to present to us.
Yes, let me see if I can call it up on my screen here. Okay, hopefully everybody can see this. So what this is, is as part of the charter procedure, anytime one of the ordinances is either amended or created, there needs to be public notice, which is typically done through the, through an advertisement in the newspaper. If it's a small amendment, then we'll actually put the amendment right in the advertisement so that people can see that. This one being kind of a wholesale change to the sign ordinance section, it wouldn't be feasible to do that. So the charter calls for a summary that's drafted by the city attorney and approved by the Board of Aldermen. And with the help of Alderwoman, former Alderwoman Mattis, we came up with these bullet points to summarize what, what was being amended in the sign ordinance. I don't know if everybody can see, can blow it up a little bit larger here. And the way that this works is that we have, this is actually the advertisement that will go in the paper, so it directs people who are interested in the the amendments to go to the city clerk's office or in this day and age, I'm sure they can get a, we can get them a PDF, but we have to make available at least 200 hard copies. That doesn't mean we have to print them all right now. I think we can print them on request, but the 201st person that comes in and asks, we technically can turn them away. So this is what we're, this is what I'm asking you to authorize as again, part of that charter procedure, that, that this be the summary that appears in the newspaper.
I'll make a motion to authorize that.
Second.
We need a motion.
Suspend the rules first? Do we need to suspend the rules?
Because it's, because it was untabled, I think, I think you're okay without the suspension, but.
So we have a motion, I believe it was seconded, to adopt the the sign, the sign ordinance warning as amended. Is there any discussion or debate on this? Hearing and
I can't hear you. Did you say, you call on me? Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is a question for the attorney. There's some dates on here. Are we changing the dates? Do we have to change the dates?
I tried to go in and change them just, just now. I might have missed one, but I think I've got them. So at the top, I've got February 16th, which is when the most of, most of the changes were made and then, and then today is when the last two. And the, the statement here will be approved on March 15th, so. I did just barely change that, so thanks, Bill, for thinking of it too.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are there any additional questions? All right, hearing and seeing none, we have a motion that has been seconded to accept the sign ordinance warning. With all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 As opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everybody. Attorney Blumer, thank you. It was very hard to see people. All right, we are on to reports of select committees, of which we have none. Reports of representatives, we have none, which brings us to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication. First up, we have requests to approve the Rutland Farmers Market annual permit. This is pages two through seven of your packet. Alderman Gillum?
I'd like to move this to the Rec Rec Committee to review it before we pass it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded to refer to the Recreation Committee review before passage. Alderwoman Davis?
So I guess I question why this is a permit that we do every year, that we've done every year for years and years. And it's just a blanket permit for the Vermont Farmers Market and Rutland County's Farmers Market with the same, we always waive and continue with the same $500 fee as last year, so I, I don't see the need to postpone or send to committee, so I'm going to vote against the motion.
Alderman Gillum?
The reason why I sent it to the committee, so the new members understand what it costs us to put that event on to the city and it's $500 covering those costs. All these budgets that we just passed this year are real, real tight, especially the recreation budget. So I want to make sure before we pass that the her costs are all covered when we do those events on that property. So that's all I'm asking, is to review it and then get the information on the table so everybody's educated here, that's all.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum.
I'm not against the farmers market, believe me, I'm not.
Superintendent Peters?
Thanks, I wanted to clarify something that Alderman Gillum said is that $500 actually does not go directly to the rec committee, the rec budget for many reasons. I'm not sure why, and somebody else might want to, might, might be able to answer that. Typically rentals of the facilities do go directly to rec, but for reasons prior to me being here, I'm not sure why they do not. I will say just with overall permitting right now and the events, every event does come to us first and we go through the safety protocol. So we have approved their safety plan as we did last year, just as as an FYI, but if, if the money part wants to be discussed, I would be okay with that.
Thank you, Superintendent Peters. Is there any other discussion, debate questions? If not, there's a motion that has been seconded to refer the Farmers Market request to the Recreation Committee. Would all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries. Up next, we have Rutland County Humane Society Coin Drops. This is pages eight through 10 of your
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded to suspend the rules. With all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
No.
Our motion carries.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve Rutland County Humane Society coin drop for July 17th from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. on Merchants Row.
21 Merchants Row.
Seconded, is there any discussion or debate?
I was just going to add 21 Merchant Throws, the address, it's no longer the Knights of Columbus, if you'd like to tidy it up, 21 merchants.
For the new members, so they understand why I'm voting no, because I don't believe in illegal hold up, holding people up in traffic to put money aside. So I always vote against this. Does not mean I'm against the organization or what they do. I just don't like the coin drop in the middle of the road, so just information for the new folks.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. So we have a motion that has been seconded to approve the Rutland County Humane Society's coin drop for July 17th, 2021, in front of the former Knights of Columbus building, 21 Merchants Row. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
And I'll also move the Rutland County Humane Society coin drop for September 18th, 2021, 2 p.m. Merchants Row, 21 Merchants Row.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on this? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. We are now on to the Board of Control Commissioners, of which we have nothing. That brings us to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the course? Hearing and seeing none. We are on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and Alderman Talbot?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up a topic. I had a number of conversations with people about, about a year ago when I was first running for the board. And then the pandemic happened and priorities changed. But it seems like maybe it's a good time to make this a priority again, and that's the, taking a look at the city website. There's a lot of really important useful information on the city website, but it's not always the easiest to navigate. And I think we could definitely be leveraging it a lot more as a tool in the city's toolkit. So I think we need to send it to committee. I'm not sure exactly where it best fits, but we need to bring in, you know, some experts and appropriate stakeholders and start talking about revamping the city website.
Second.
Alderman? Sorry, Alderman Franco, followed by Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just wanted to agree and say that I support having a website redesign, not only for the important, you know, marketing reasons that I think are critical as it reflects our city, but also because of the role that I think the city website can play as we enter our economic recovery from the pandemic. In today's world, information and resources are primarily shared online. And so our ability to reach the right people and connect them to the right resources and share information on our progress of our economic recovery is only going to be as successful as the strength of our online presence. And so though our city website currently and our business portal, you know, both offer some good information and resources currently. And so though our city website currently and our business portal, you know, both offer some good information and resources currently, I do believe that we could do more to integrate them and to redesign their functionality to ensure that no taxpayers or business owners or residents struggle with finding the resources or understanding the progress that we're making toward economic recovery. And so, you know, in effect, I want to see this shift from viewing our online presence as supplemental to our work as a city, but instead is a critical tool to be leveraged in our recovery efforts. And so I move to refer a website redesign to the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded. I have Alderman Clifford followed by Alderman Garusa. You're okay?
I'm good.
Alderman Garusa.
We got two motions going here. I was, I think it's kind of ironic because Alderman Talbot and I haven't really spoke much, almost got into an argument last summer because I was Googling and I think I had, somebody had me Yahoo or whatever, and I didn't realize there are two separate whatever engines or whatever you call them, and I was getting different information than other people. And we don't really have a standardized website, well, little of it I know. And I think these guys are absolutely right. And I'm looking at the committees here from, from last year or whatever before tonight. And I think it's got marketing committee written all over it, which happens to have Alderman Talbot and me on it. If, if you continue that, Mr. Chairman, and I think it's a, a marketing issue, as Alderman Franco might say. So I just want to throw that out. If, if the makers of their motion want to zero it in on the marketing committee, that's, that's my suggestion. I'd love to see us for the real live website, a real, real live website. That'd be really cool. Like a real city, like a real live one. That'd be neat. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents on it. I'll go wherever you want to put it, but I, it's important to the city that we do that. And it's a great start and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alderman Garusa. Real quick, just for clarification. Alderman Talbot, I don't know, put forward a committee, just kind of posited that it need to go somewhere. So I did hear you second. But I believe Alderman Franco made a motion specific to a committee that was then seconded. I did see some hands go up. Alderman Talbot?
I mean, I was just going to say, I think based on what Alderman Franco said, the idea of community and economic development could be good because of the potential to leverage COVID relief funds that might be coming, sort of aligning it with the economic recovery.
I know me.
Thank you, Alderman Talbot. Any other discussion, debate?
Point, point of order. What committee is that going to now? I'm just.
So the referral is to community and economic development. All right, if there's no further discussion or debate, all those in favor of referring the city website review development to Community and Economic Development Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. We are still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Is there any other items to come before the board? Hearing and seeing nothing, Attorney Blumer, I believe I'm going to turn this over to you for our executive sessions.
Okay, thank you. And there are two, and what we've been doing is doing our motions here in the open session and then just staying in executive session, rather than come back and do the motions again to go in. So the one I would like to start with is the labor relations agreement. And then we'll have to let the police chief know when we're ready for the second one, which is pending litigation. So the set of motions here, again, for the, for the new alderman, in order to go into executive session for certain topics, there's two motions that are required. The first motion, in this case, for the labor relations agreement. The first motion is to find that premature general public knowledge regarding negotiation of a labor relations agreement would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the agreement provisions to be negotiated. So if someone would move that, I can give a little bit more clarification before you vote.
Second.
Right, we have a motion seconded.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just again, a quick explanation of that. So generally, you know, we're subject to open meeting laws and conversation, and certainly decision-making needs to be made in open session. But there are, are some exceptions. And in this case, the idea behind this with all that language is just that if, if we're negotiating a contract, it's, it's a disadvantage for the city to have that discussion in, in open session so that the other party potentially knows, you know, what, what the city's talking about or what, what sort of advice I'm giving. So that's why we do this first motion to find that that premature general public knowledge would put us at a substantial disadvantage.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. So we have that motion and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer.
Okay, and then the second motion related to this item is a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, recreation superintendent, maintenance director, treasurer, and city attorney to discuss the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313a1b.
Hello.
Some second.
All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer.
All right, and then the motions for the second topic that we'll, we'll discuss in executive session are a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding pending litigation, to which the city is a party, would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy and such pending litigation and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer.
And then finally, a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the city attorney, police chief, treasurer, and mayor to discuss pending litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313a1e and Title I, Section 313a1f.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. I believe that's it for us, right, Attorney Blumer?
Yep, hopefully everybody got the link for the executive session. If you didn't, I guess, let me know now and I'll make sure I, I forward it to you. Paul? Is that you? Yeah.
I'm just waving to Rebecca.
Oh, okay.
Enjoy executive session.
Oh yes, if anybody needs the link, let me know. I'll meet you on the other side.
All right, we see everyone in executive session.
So for the, for the rec union contract, the motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Recreation Maintenance Union in substantially the form presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded to authorize Mary to sign the collective bargaining agreement for the rec center as presented. Is there any discussion or debate on this motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer, what would be?
So for purposes of a vote or a debate, the next motion regarding the sergeant settlement would be to authorize the mayor to ratify the settlement agreement between the city and the six sergeants on the terms presented and to sign all related documents.
So, Mr. President, point of order.
Yes, sir.
So if, if we, if somebody moves that, it gets seconded, at least it's on the table, we can start discussing it. And if there are amendments that want to be, that somebody wants to present, to alter that in any way, shape, or form, that can begin at that time. So I'm going to move this for proposal from Attorney Blumer. If somebody wants to second it, at least we get it out on the floor and then we can start amending it as we feel necessary. So, so moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion that has been seconded. So this is now open for debate, discussion, questions.
Just if I may, the only thing I might suggest is those discussions would probably be better to have in, in executive session so that, again, the other side isn't privy to how far we'll go or what, what, you know, the terms are that we're, that we're looking for. So it may be better to have a vote. You know, vote it up or down. If it goes down, you know, we could either go back in tonight or we could talk about it next meeting. But I think unless you want sort of a take it or leave it offer, then it would be, it would be more valuable to be in executive session where they won't know what the bottom line is necessarily, that, that, you know, six people are willing to, to vote for. But that's, you know, that, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Attorney Blumer. Alderwoman Davis.
So I agree. I don't think we need to debate it anymore. I think we did that a lot. I, I think in executive session, there was an amendment to the, to the motion. So I think, I think the city attorney has direction, to some direction and knows kind of where we stand. So I'm ready to, the motion's on the floor. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Alderwoman Davis. Is there any further discussion, debate, or questions? Alderman Garusa?
Motion is without the amendment or with the amendment? What's?
The motion is. Oh.
The motion is as, as, as it was originally presented. That, that's what the sergeants have agreed to. And so that's what would be, that we could enter into that deal tonight with a positive vote. Otherwise, we would, you know, go, go back to the drawing board.
And if, if that failed, we would go into an amended motion, Alderman Davis? No? Okay.
Well, I guess, all I would say is I know that, I know that that was what Alderman, Alderwoman Davis's opinion was on. You know, if, if it were to fail, what she would be comfortable with. But I don't, I don't know if that's what the other board members feel or if we have six votes for that. So.
I'm going for a roll call vote, please.
Session would probably be helpful if it, if it doesn't pass.
The election.
Thank you.
All right, so, so we have the motion. It has been seconded. It is on whether or not to accept the agreement as presented to us in executive session by Attorney Blumer. Alderman Garusa has asked for a roll call vote. We will proceed with that. So Clerk Hack, will you please take the roll call?
Just so the new members understand how the roll call works, when we're in chambers one of these days, it starts on the left-hand side and works their way around. And I think I may have mentioned it during orientation with my three gentlemen friends who were there when we were upstairs. So I have in my mind mentally given you a seat. It doesn't mean you have to take it, but I start with Alderman Garusa.
Yes.
Alderman Neary?
Um, oh.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, if I may, so the motion on the floor is to approve as presented. It's, I was questioning that Alderman Garusa voted correctly, I guess.
Yeah, I have no choice. I think it's far gone. I think the city attorney kind of got us into it. We got to go with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Neary, are you okay with your vote? Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is the right solution from now. We can solve this bigger challenge. Yes.
Savage.
Um, yes, I, I think it's to the point where it's, it's got to be behind us.
Alderman Franco?
Uh, yeah, I believe it's.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
No.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
Alderman Deploy?
No.
Alderman, Alderwoman Davis?
No.
Six-four motion pass. The vote is six-four, the motion passes.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Right, we have a motion to adjourn and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We stand adjourned.
Everyone, welcome, guys. See y'all later.
Good night, folks.
Thank you.